We're at 901 Main Street and we're at the Assembly Hall and we're calling our meeting to order. Commissioner Washington will be joining us momentarily. In the meantime, myself and Commissioner Williams will get the meeting started. So we're calling our meeting to order this morning. We will start with our invocation. And my good friend from the Agapi Fellowship Christian Center. Come on up Pastor Joyce Hill. Y'all give the pastor a round of applause as she makes her way up. Absolutely. Pastor, you position that mic so they can hear you. Give us a word of prayer this morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let us pray. Almighty God and Father, we come before you this morning thanking you, Lord God, for who you are. We enter your gates with thanksgiving and into your courts with praise. We thank you, Lord God, that your blessings and mercies are brand new this morning. We praise you, Lord God, for your wonderful works toward the children of men. And we come with our petitions and our needs before you because we recognize our need of you, Lord God. We come, Lord God, asking you, Lord God, to hear us, oh God, this morning, Lord. As we ask, Lord God, that you dispense wisdom, oh God, and knowledge and understanding to these commissioners, Lord God, and all that have to do, Lord God, with this commission. We pray, God, today, that they would recognize, oh God, that their stewardship and their leadership comes from you, Father, and that ultimately, Lord, they're responsible and accountable to you. We pray, oh God, today, that, Lord God, you would give them the wisdom and the strength, oh God, that they need as they come day by day and week by week, oh God, to plan and implement, Father God. We pray, oh God, today, that, Lord God, you would cause them to consult you, Lord God, to know that you're always available, Lord. You are everywhere at all times in all things. And so, God, we ask you, Lord God, to not only bless them corporately and individually, but bless their homes and their families, Lord. As they go about your business, Lord, we pray, God, that you would take care of theirs, Lord God. And we just glorify you, Lord, for what you're going to do. We pray protection over this county of Rockdale. We pray that your will would be done in this county and in the lives of each of these individuals. For you know that even as their faces differ, their needs differ. And we commit these prayers to you in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. And at this time, I believe we're to say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Hill. Thank you so much for gracing us this morning with your presence and being a part of our BOC meeting. And we thank you and tell Pastor Hazel hello. And let me say, Commissioner Williams, and to our listening audience. Our good friends, the folks over at Agapi Fellowship Christian Center. They're on Flat Shows Road at the corner of Flat Shows and Johnson Road here in Rockdale County. They have a weekly food pantry where they are serving the community and giving out provisions to families all throughout Rockdale County. There are so many faith-based entities who are doing wonderful things in our community. And they don't make a bunch of noise. They just take care of God's people and they take care of this community. Y'all give Pastor and Agapi a round of applause for the work. Yes. Thank you so much. Pastor Hazel is the senior pastor and Pastor Hill is one of the associate pastors over at Agapi Fellowship Christian Center. We're so glad that she was able to come out this morning and lead us in invocation. It's just always refreshing, and I've said it multiple times, that we live in a country and a county where we can open up a political government meeting with a word of prayer. And that's just a blessing within itself. So we certainly don't take that for granted. Moving forward, we have a pretty robust agenda. I'm going to yield to our Government Affairs Director and our Clerk for the BLC to kind of give us an overview of what to expect today. We've got a couple of things that are going on today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we have a long agenda today. So we'll start off with a work session, voting session this morning. And after we adjourn from this meeting, we will come back here at, we'll pick up at 1:00 with the budget hearings and work session, actually. We'll start off with the Sheriff's Office. We'll have probate court. Then we'll have a lunch break or just take an afternoon break. And then fire rescue and the public defender's office. So we will be going through those budgets here in this Assembly Hall and those meetings will be streamed.
Director, thank you so much for that overview. Now we know what we can expect. Moving forward, Commissioner Williams, we've got a robust agenda. Item number four, the approval of the agenda. What is your pleasure?
What about the, I see the...
Thank you.
We have Mr. Ron Farley here this morning.
Pumping those brakes. Thank you so much. Absolutely. And that's a perfect segue for me to clean that up, too. I led the call and led the initiative on what we've been talking about in Rockdale County for so long in terms of what we, as a community, are going to do about homelessness in Rockdale County. We've been talking about it for quite some time. And I will say that I'm proud that the Mayor Vince Evans and our school superintendent, Dr. Terry Oats, have joined forces with Rockdale County so that we can take a hard look and really gather the data and the facts and information in terms of what we need to do. Do action, no more talking. So we put together the joint Conyers-Rockdale homelessness task force so that we can address and they can do a deep dive. And today, this morning, our friend Ron Farley, who has led that up with a host of other folks, and we're going to acknowledge the other members of the task force before his presentation is completely over. But Ron is going to give us not only the final overview, but also the recommendation coming from the task force in terms of what this community as a whole, what we need to do. Ron?
Absolutely. Thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner Williams.
No matter how often I do this, I still pause before I present and consider the information that I'm about to share before this audience. And the reason for that is that this particular report has an implication beyond ourselves. It goes into the community and if it's done correctly, when our children are visiting us at some other place other than here, this work will continue. And that's what this report is about. It is not a comprehensive strategic report. That is not what we were charged to do. We were charged with giving an executable plan that could be initiated to put in place infrastructure to support homelessness in Rockdale County. And we believe we accomplished that in the plan that was going to, the report's going to be presented today. So what are the things that I'm going to do today? Well, they're going to be scrolling the actual report on the screen. It may be too small to hear. But after this meeting, this will be a public document. It will be shared widely. So what you can't see on the screen, you will have access to. And we're going to preface that with this video. Homelessness has many different faces. We saw some on the screen today. That's not always indicative of what you see here in Rockdale County. In Rockdale County, we have many encampments. It means they're off the street into the woods. We also have many who are living in cars. In that particular scenario, it is hard to get access to it. So some people see homelessness and then there's many others who don't. But that does not mean it doesn't exist. The report that I'm giving today is the final report of the task force itself, intended to give recommendations to the Board of Commission and by extension to the fellow partners of the City of Conyers and Rockdale County Public Schools. My role in this was to facilitate the conversation among those individuals to come to a place that we can give the recommendation that we're going to share today. One of the things that is very important is for us to acknowledge those individuals who were given the assignment. Some of them are not, are here today, some of them are not. They had to make a decision between a preview of the report and being here today. You can only take so much time off of work and they had to make the appropriate decisions. But I want to thank them for the work that they've done in giving and contributing to this and the ideas, recommendations, and work that I had the pleasure of just compiling into this report based on their feedback. It was an iterative process. We put out work, we assessed it, we critiqued it. We didn't like some of it. We changed it, we modified it, we explained it. And we also had to come to the conclusion that we're not going to solve all the problems and remind ourselves that that is not our goal. What's important is that we were not given authority to act on behalf of the sponsors. We were only given authority to come up with recommendations and probe for more information of what's possible here. So this recommendation is not going to say we can. It's more actively going to say the sponsors can, if they choose to act, move in this direction. One of the things I'm going to do, and I know they're going to be scrolling on the page. You can't see it very well, but like I said, this is a public document. It will be available after. The commissioner's having it in front of you. As I step through the document, I am not going through this entire 30 pages. 15 pages of it is addendum. The other is going to be straightforward and to the point. So if we walk through this, the first page is really going to have just task force sponsors, sponsors and the members. Of course, the Chair already said himself, Mayor Evans and Dr. Oats are the sponsors in their capacity of leader of the organizations. Also, we have the task force facilitator, which is myself, and the task force members. Ms. Katia Brown, Octavia, Dr. Bruington, Ms. Carter, Ms. Ernst, Ms. George, Mr. Hutchinson, Ms. Lett, Mr. Bond, Jamison. A very active and vocal member, I might add. Tracy Knudsen, Ms. Martin, Ms. McKimmon, who also serves, I want to point out, she is the co-responder with the Conyers Police Department, dealing with issues of mental health. Rockdale's very own Jessica Paletti, who was very helpful, instrumental. Pretty much leaned on her very much in producing this report. Mr. Furman, Brian Russell, Vernon Sands, Katie Stoltz, and Robert Teetz. All of them actively participated in this work that we're going to present today. And I want to take a moment to acknowledge them. I know the chairman's going to do it in his own way later in this presentation. Let's just jump right in. I am not, I gave a previous presentation that we're going to build upon today. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time recovering background. I'm going to build on that presentation. But I do want to give the background as it relates to where we're going. It was initiated by Chairman Osmond, includes selected members put forth by the chairman, the mayor, and the superintendent. But our task, that's what I really want us to look at here today. Our task was to identify, develop quantifiable recommendations that provide workable, reasonable, feasible solutions designed to significantly combat homelessness within Rockdale County. I believe you're going to see that today. But one of the things I do want to add is there might be some language in the report that's specific to homelessness that everyone may not understand. But that's the heart of homelessness. As we dig into this, we realize we're also going to have to be educational in our presentation. So a lot of the appendices in the document are educational to describe the words that are going to be used in the document. So if I move through and I say something that is not easily understood, just ask me and I'll give a further definition. Homelessness in the United States has been on the rise since 2017. Overall, it's increased 6%. 5% of those are unaccompanied youth 25 and under, and they're considered to be very much at risk and vulnerable. Next page. "In the definition of homelessness, an individual or family who lacks the fixed, regular, or adequate nighttime residence, such as those living in emergency shelters, transitional housing, or places not meant for habitation." That includes cars, that includes under the bridge, that's anywhere that is not intended for you to live in, no matter how nice the features are in the vehicle. It is still not intended for human habitation. One of the things that's also part of homelessness is being at risk of homelessness. There are those who are homeless and there are those who are about to be homeless. There are many things that may cause that. One of the main things that causes that is the financial, economics. I mean, I just don't have money to pay all these bills, food, medical, and other things, and rent at the income that I'm currently being paid or my spouse is currently being paid or that's coming into the household as a whole. One of the difficulties of dealing with this issue is that someone may be economically challenged and at threat of homelessness and then getting the support from their family and they become housed again. So you see people moving in and out of that scenario of not really having a permanency, then moving back into permanency, not having permanency. So that instability is a consistent, then eventually they fall into homelessness because there wasn't anybody to catch them. Or the people who they're relying on, quite frankly, couldn't help them again. And that's a difficulty that we also must address. And Rockdale and Conyers, the City of Conyers pretty much are, as I like to say, sharing the same dirt. Right? You are the same entity when it comes to the issue of homelessness, though you have different jurisdictional responsibilities and authority in resolving it within the boundaries. So a lot of the information that we share about homelessness is going to cross those boundaries. It is indiscriminate. Because when HUD deals with the issue of Rockdale County, it is indiscriminate of those boundaries between state, I'm sorry, between city and county. It is dealing with Rockdale County as a whole. And of course, Rockdale County Public Schools just resides within those same boundaries, but disparate and dispersed throughout the geography of Rockdale County. So Rockdale County and the City of Conyers as a whole, if we look at what was considered the official homelessness count, the PIT count, the point in time count, which is done every two years, commissioned by HUD. In 2022, we had a total of 97 who were homeless. And that also ended up being 31 who are considered unsheltered. I, you're living in your car, you're out on the streets, you're in an encampment, you are totally unsheltered. The other ones are sheltered, but they're not in a place of permanency. They may be in a hotel extended stay. They may be sitting on somebody's couch. Generally, if you do not have your name on a lease, you can be, you have no legal recourse if you're put out of that individual location. So you're not in a place of permanence. In 2024, this number is unofficial because HUD hasn't accepted it. The unsheltered count is 43 and the homeless count is 90. We just performed that count this year in January 2024. It was actually led by project manager Jessica Paletti of Rockdale County and also a local nonprofit, Changer Shards. So as we look at that, that is inclusive of the city and the county. But let's get some perspective. We're not like other urban areas. We're unique in how our homelessness is presented. We don't have the issue of downtown Atlanta. We don't have the issue of Athens Clark County and they do with their center around their college students and various industries there. But we do have our own unique homelessness that needs to be addressed. Roughly half of Rockdale's homeless neighbors live in vehicles, RVs, or makeshift shelters, placing them in a position where they unintentionally may violate local laws. Next slide. Another data point regarding potential homelessness is from the Rockdale magistrate court. And that is simply how many people are at risk of being evicted. Or as they call it, dispossessory new filings, right? Being put out of your place of residence. In 2021, that was 2,386. 2022, that was 3,342. That's a 29% increase. In 2023, that was 4,184. That's a 21% increase. Quite frankly, it's going in the wrong direction. I think we can all agree. Those are filings. Those aren't actual evictions. Some of those may have been resolved in an active way, which they were able to stay, that people were able to make a payment, people were able to make, or just make, at least make things right before they moved out. So all of them did not end in eviction. But this represents how many landlords, land property owners, wanted to put somebody out of their residence. And we don't know what the end of that is. That's another follow-up. Again, this individual task force was not commissioned to go out and find all those answers. But that is a follow-up point on how many people were actually evicted through our magistrate court. Then we deal with Rockdale County Public School, kind of identifying the problem. They have a unique area, but they also have a unique law that applies to them. And it's the McKinney-Vento Act. Generally, if children lack fixed adequate income, same as adults, living in emergency or transitional, same as adults. Living in cars, buildings, and other things, same as adults. And also unaccompanied youth. Because of course you end up with DFAS getting involved when you start talking about children. You end up with Juvenile Court or Children's Court dealing with issues of children. But you also deal with individuals who become of certain age, youth 16 to 24, who are more self-motivated. I, if they don't want to be in a place, they may leave a place. Or if the place is not feel safe for them, they may leave that individual place. So many may be fleeing sexual abuse, physical abuse, or they may be of the LGBTQ community and are not being accepted in the place they are. So we have reasons for them to be unaccompanied and homeless. But Rockdale County Public School System and all schools are responsible for educating those children and providing a mechanism for them to be educated. And that generally starts with them being housed somewhere. The challenge that they have is coming into Rockdale County, which is the adult population does, is that there is nowhere to house those individuals. So even if they had a 17-year-old who was unaccompanied, they were trying to figure out what to do and process, they still would have to find a place for that individual to be housed while they worked through their issues. Let's get into a more relevant issue. They're dealing with an 18-year-old adult, right? He's 18, but I still got six months left in school. It's December. I don't graduate until May of the next year, but I'm 18. I don't have a place to stay. How do we deal with those individuals? Well, Rockdale County Public Schools and the rest of the schools in the nation have to address that. And that's what the McKinney-Vento Act allows for them to do. It gives them direction to access funding to address that. But what do they need? They need a bed. They need a place to address that. So as we as a task force looked at these individual problems, we also decided to come up, to expand and try to, like I said, use this document to educate anyone who picked it up. So that's why we wanted to put that information in there. Next page. On Appendix A, it actually shows, and I'm not going to go there. It actually shows a flow chart on how they have to make some decisions about the decision-making process for McKinney-Vento. But one thing of importance is if we specifically look at the barriers that Rockdale County Public School has, it is very clear that they have the same barriers as the adults, but they have to be sensitive in how they address them. So they need a more nuanced level of support than the adult population do it sometimes, if the child is unaccompanied. If the child is with their family, then we just need to get the family housed like we normally do in any other sheltering circumstance. But if we look at the Rockdale County Public School homelessness, this particular year and how they measure homelessness to include those who don't have a name in their lease. If you're staying in someone else's house and your name is not on the lease, you have no legal recourse if you're getting put out. You are considered homeless in the McKinney-Vento scenario. So under that scenario, last year, they started the school year with 1,490 people who fell within the category of homeless as a child under the McKinney-Vento Act. Right? That doesn't mean that they were physically on the street. That really meant that they probably weren't positive on where they were going to sleep tonight. And they dealt with that issue consistently. As they addressed this at the beginning of the year, it generally declines as they move forward because they do put measures in place. But many of those measures include moving those families out of the county and then making arrangements for the children to come back into the county for school. Right? So there ends up being a very large transportation problem associated with that. Next slide. If we look at where we ended up as a defining principle. We decided that everyone should be housed in a safe place intended for human habitation. We found no objections. And if anyone has objections to that in this room, I would love to talk to you after because you should have no objections. We want to use evidence-based Housing First model. And I'll explain that in a minute. We want to have case management is integral to the alleviation of homelessness. Why? I can't just put you in a place. I also need to address the issues that made you become homeless. So you have to deal with that component. Homelessness should be temporary, not permanent. You shouldn't continuously be in a state of homelessness. And that goes to equipping the individuals with the tools they need to stay in permanent housing, those wraparound services that we dealt with. So we want to deal with those four principles. And that led us to four objectives. And they're in Appendix D of this document. Immediate access to housing. Why? If you're homeless, the first thing we need to do is get you into housing. Access to services and case management to assist. Again, now we need to figure out those things that made you homeless or that are preventing you or as barriers to getting you into housing. We need to get you, we need to deal with those issues. And sometimes that can mean I need to get you a driver's license. I need to get birth certificate. I need to get documentation just to get you stable. I may need to deal with an eviction that you had that's keeping you from moving in. There are myriad of things that may be keeping you from being housed. You just don't have a job. And we may need to deal with getting you a job, employment, and various other things. Identify issues if addressed would avoid homelessness and improve housing stability. Why? We need to prevent individuals. There are funds currently out there that you can use for, to pay for rent and mortgages to prevent eviction and foreclosure. But those also need to be wrapped in with a series of services and case management to address the issues that got you there. Financial literacy or other issues maybe around that. Or you just not, don't have enough income to live alone, but you like living alone. And there may be challenges with that. Perform outreach in the community to identify the homeless population and offer them pathways to housing. So basically engage homelessness. Where now you get phone calls about homelessness, you get phone calls and issues, then you respond to them reactively. But let's go out and engage it proactively in a positive way and deal with the issues. There's a process out there called Housing First. So on the, what is Housing First? Housing First is not a housing only. It includes an array of support services such as substance abuse, mental health counseling, employment training, and among others, that are needed to live stably in a community. Housing First recognizes that stable housing is required for effective psychiatric substance use or just plain old improved quality of life. Once stably housed, an individual can be better able to take advantage of the wraparound services of employment over our health without stable housing. Attaining any of the other goals becomes a very difficult proposition. Housing First says, we need to get you in a bed and then we can deal with your issues. Otherwise, if we try to deal with your issues without any stability, we may not be able to find you tomorrow. And then you end up in this doom loop, so to speak. So Housing First. How does it work? Pretty much it means you want to rapidly want to end homeless and increase housing stability. You can improve the quality of life of others. You can lead to better treatment outcomes. And this can lead to better net economic benefits that reduce taxpayer spending on public services, including emergency health, criminal legal system. Why? When you think about homelessness, they still go to the emergency room and they still interact with the police. Those are expenditures. A night in the emergency room and a night in jail has a cost. That cost is a lot less than a night in a shelter scenario or a housing scenario. So don't get stuck on the shelter word. We're going to address that in a minute. In a housing scenario. So keep in mind that we're not looking at a total plan that says, hey, you're funding this from zero. Some of this funding is going to come from money not spent in other areas. And we're going to take a look at that later in this presentation. At the end of that page, it says, what funding is available? Well, the primary means of funding is the HUD Emergency Solutions Grant. This is a matching grant series, which means that you have to come up with money and then they'll match it. If you have $20,000, they'll give you $20,000. You have $50,000, they'll give you $50,000. So it's a matching grant scenario. But those ESG programs will give funding to engage homeless individuals and families living on the street. They will improve the number or quality of any emergency shelters. They help operate these shelters. They provide essential services to shelter residents. And they offer rapid rehousing to homeless individuals and families. And they prevent families and individuals from becoming homeless. So there is funds out there to address the population that we're discussing. And these funds may be used in five different program areas. Street outreach, emergency shelter, homeless prevention, rapid rehousing assistance, HMIS, as well as administrative costs. So even the admin costs can be covered in the funds for homelessness prevention. Street outreach, emergency shelter, and homelessness prevention. We pretty much, I think, have a good idea in our minds of what that is and most likely you're accurate. One of the things we don't understand very well is rapid rehousing. So in the area of rapid rehousing, its activities are designed to move people experiencing literal homelessness into permanent housing as quickly as possible. The services and assistance generally consist of short-term and medium-term rental assistance, rental arrears, rental application fees, security deposits, advanced payments of last month's rents, utility payments and deposits, moving costs. utility payments and deposits, moving costs, housing search and placement, housing stability case manager, mediation, legal services, and credit repair. All of that has, is, has, has a fund out there in ESG to help someone get housed. So this isn't all of us just reaching into our pockets, the sponsors into their budgets to pay for this. There's funding regularly available that we just have not accessed. So how much does it cost to house homeless people? Well, it depends. There's generally a low bed cost, a mid-bed cost, and a high bed cost. And, and it's more details of that in this document. The low bed cost is just that. I'm pretty much housing you for the night. Morning comes, I'm, I'm letting you leave. I'm not probably giving you any food. I might be giving you a little bag or something with lunch, with an apple or something to drink. But it's really just getting you off the street. Minimum shelter requirement. Middle bed cost, maybe feeding you a meal or so, maybe giving you transportation, maybe some case management, dealing with your issues more directly. But it's still more of a shelter scenario. But it's giving you a little bit more services or it even deals with families, which is a, which is a more expensive proposition, but needed. And then a high bed cost, of course, is giving you probably three meals a day. It has a day program. It's providing you wraparound services and case management in a more intensive way to deal with the issues and barriers. But there's another process. We talked about it earlier, and that is Housing First. But before we get there, I want you to understand that we're going to be using a number, and it's in this particular sheet. Go ahead and scroll up to bed cost chart piece. And that's the number of beds sixteen. There you go, right there. Good stuff. Number of beds sixteen. How do we get that number? Well, it's twenty-five percent of our homelessness count roughly and one-third of our truly unsheltered count. Right? So we know we wasn't going to, or nor did we intend to, start off on day one, housing all the homelessness because we didn't know what we were doing for one. And we're learning as we go, and we needed to start somewhere. As we looked at the documentation of, of other starting organizations, one-third, targeting a program that deals with one-third of that population was a reasonable beginning of the issue and then scaling up. Because then it's just an incremental cost of one more bed, one more bed, one more bed, one more family and dealing with that. So you end up seeing these numbers here. So for the sake of this conversation, low bed cost is thirty-five dollars a week. Mid, mid-bed cost is fifty-five dollars, I'm sorry, a night. Mid-bed cost is fifty-five dollars a night. High bed is seventy-five. Those all calculate out to the annual numbers you see there. This does not mean we're only serving sixteen people. It means that we only have sixteen beds. So as you see there in the next box underneath there, it says number of beds per client. If we have average stay of one week, that means those sixteen beds in a year will serve eight hundred and thirty-two individuals. If they're staying for two weeks, we will serve four hundred and sixteen individuals, et cetera, et cetera. So how often and how quickly you deal with the issue and get them out of your bed and into permanent housing of their own frees up the beds to help more individuals that we're dealing with. But then there's a Housing First chart. Remember, because we're using the principle of Housing First. The Housing First bed count cost is ninety dollars. That is all those intensive efforts that it's going to take to get an individual housed. Why do we want to share that number? Because we want to use the Housing First principle of homelessness. It is tried and true. It is fundamentally effective. And it is also what many of the peers and other ESG grants to include HUD are recommending the use and, and, and of housing. You're going to see that number again. So if you look at the annual cost for sixteen beds, it's five hundred and twenty-five dollars, five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And you're going to see that number again as we work through. And we're almost finished. I assure you. All that leads to the recommendation. What is our recommendation? Remember, our goal was to give something that was quantifiable and really executable and reasonable. And we believe that this is what this is. We believe that year one, as the task force lead sponsors, the Rockdale County should assign a homeless lead to advance the recommendations of this report. That lead will collaborate and plan with the partner representatives, develop and initiate a fundraising plan, develop the standards, implement coordinated entries, best practice, initiate outreach and advocacy, and move toward establishing or selecting a lead organization to pursue the ESG grants in spring twenty twenty-five and each year after. And of course, those are those ESG with those, with those grants cover. And then the budget for this year, we estimate to get started, the task force sponsors should contribute a hundred and twenty thousand in year one. Part of the fund would be the initial homelessness effort to include McKinney-Vento requirements, part to fund initiating the recommendations in this report, and part to establish matching funds for the Georgia DCA ESG in the spring. So an example budget is provided there. Some toward homelessness to actually start working in there, twenty-two thousand for the matching. Then, of course, we got to get an HMIS, which is the Homeless Management System, coordinated entry, which means the case management that we're dealing with. You're going to need to go out there and do it. HR, PR to get individuals informed of this. Administrative expenses, everybody wants a copy of that report, and contract services in a specialized way. What am I saying with contract services at forty thousand? Well, that would be the fundraising, the grant writing, homelessness support, any expertise that may be needed, but you don't have, that you know you need to tap into to get it off the ground. So that's for a hundred and twenty thousand. Year two. Year two will build on year one. So next page. Year two will build on year one. It's going to be based on a community funding model. The assumption here is that everything in year one has been implemented and the ESG grants have been submitted. Fundraising has began. What is the fundraising? The community funding model. The idea is basically the community caring for the community. Year two funding goal is five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. And the community funding model breaks down like this. The business community gives four hundred and thirty-five thousand. Using a database of six hundred businesses are donor, assuming an eighty-twenty model because everybody doesn't give. That means twenty percent of the businesses will give eighty percent of the funds. That means a hundred and twenty businesses will give three hundred and forty-eight thousand, and that will be two thousand nine hundred per business, leaving four hundred and eighty businesses to give eighty-seven thousand or a hundred and eighty-two per business. The religious community or churches and ministries will give seventy thousand. That list of a hundred and twenty churches and ministries, some of them on the business list, assume the eighty-twenty rule again. That means the twenty-four churches and ministry will give fifty-six thousand or two thousand three hundred and twenty-four per church and ministry, leaving ninety-six churches and ministries to give fourteen thousand dollars or a hundred and forty-six. Civic organizations, the same math, assuming only ten of them will give two thousand sixty, that will be twenty-sixty. That gives you your five hundred and twenty-five thousand six hundred. Right? But we have another issue. This does not include any outside money. This does not include the ESG grants. This does not include any foundations or businesses outside of the county. That list was all from inside the county. This does not include individual contribution. So there's a lot of money not accounted for in this. Our goal was not to go that deep, was to give the funding model and show that it will work. We believe this will work and then present it to this body as a means of moving forward. But what does that mean? We have a year two budget. The categories are shown. You can move past that straight to the budget on the next page. As you see these numbers, keep in mind, these are not discounted. These are full rack rate. This is go out on the street, look them up on the web, whatever that number is, that's what's in this budget. The purpose of this lead and ongoing work is to negotiate that down. I didn't want, I didn't want to start with an estimated low and then we can't get it. I figured we'd start high and go low, then not be able to hit the market. So if we look at this as two bedrooms with utilities, why? We don't have a shelter. We have to have a place. You can call that a house. You can rename that anything you want that's beds in it that you're going to have to rent. That's what this number represents. We're going to need two of those, and that's going to give us a number. We're still going to have to do people in hotels and, and include families and others who can't fit into a room with an individual. So we got two hotels pricing. Again, that can be in-house, there can be some other means of doing this, but we needed to put a number here to represent what is dual. Dealing with food. We deal with the meal cost. Where do we get from? We got that from Feeding America. We give them two meals a day at least. More likely it's going to be three, but we, we supply for two meals a day in this scenario. We do staffing of a director, a housing case manager and an outreach coordinator, a half, a half FD for the housing coordinator. Just to show that this is needed and required, we also put a line item for benefits. That is probably very low. We need to increase, increase that and also the staff. We ended up using a, a study. Anybody in this scenario, in this space, who is a staff member, who makes less than fifty thousand dollars are generally in need of services themselves. So these numbers are higher than fifty thousand dollars on purpose, though I saw many job postings for less than fifty thousand dollars. Transportation. We don't have transportation in the county, so we apply for that. We also allow for Uber and Lyft. But here we are with the end here. We got mortgage rental assistance, case management outreach, landlord rapid rehousing, operational administrative assistance. You see on the right-hand side, all of those have a potential match. So you don't have to come up with all this funding in order to get, again, to that five hundred and twenty-six thousand. That number equals the community funding plan, which equals the ninety-day-per-night cost. So that number flows all the way through. So if you get this funding, everything that I previously spoke of is dual. Right? So this is not a pie-in-the-sky plan. It is executable. It is, I believe, to be reasonable, and it's something that can be started today as we move forward. And with conclusion, show the conclusion. There we go. The task was to identify and develop quantifiable recommendations that will provide workable, reasonable, and feasible solutions designed to significantly combat homelessness in Rockdale County. This report accomplishes that by, one, offering implementation actions that can be initiated now for year one and year two. Two, outlines reasonable, executable funding mechanism to support the Housing First model. And three, addresses housing for single adults, families, and youth. We understand that the recommendations of this report are the only way to get things done. Additional approaches, great ideas, practical refinements of existing approaches are to be expected and welcome. We ask only that you help by providing an alternative solution. The task force members would like to thank Mayor Evans, Chairman Nesbitt, and Superintendent Oates for our appointment to the task force. And we hope that the recommendations of this report will begin to change lives soon. Ms. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ron. And before, I'm going to yield in just a second to the two commissioners. But before I do that, I want to make sure I take a moment to acknowledge all of the members on the task force. I'm going to call them each of those names of those who gave her the time and talent to bring this data and information to help compile and do the research. We don't take anybody's time and talent for granted. If you're here, I'd like for you to please stand. Some of these individuals are not here due to other obligations and work in school. Ms. Katia Brown, Ms. Katia Brown, Destiny Martin, Michael Hutchison, Katie Stoltz, Jessica Palet, April Fallon, Furman Rogers, Katrina Carter, Dr. Octavia Ferguson-Brewington, Vernon Sands, Robert Teeds, Ann McKeen, Tracy Nutson, Ann George, Brian Russell, Sandra Jackson Lett, Brenda Ernest, Tanya Cobb, Von Jameson, and Mr. Ron Farley. Join me in giving these folks a round of applause. Want to say publicly, thank you to all of you all for your time and service. Thank you for all of your dedication, putting into this very tedious work. Commissioners, before I yield, I do want to say thank you again to Ron and his leadership. Ron is no stranger to leadership in Rockdale County. As you all know, he led the effort with the beginning efforts of the Restoration Storehouse. I think it was in our best interest to find the personality in Ron Farley to be able to lead this effort and initiative as it relates to homelessness in Rockdale County. As you've heard me say earlier this morning and many occasions, we've done a lot of talking in Rockdale County about, about how we're going to address the homeless population in our community. This presentation, this outline gives us a very deep dive into what Rockdale County looks like, how it impacts our local schools, our local businesses, and all of the above. It was a long presentation, even knowing that he condensed it. But let me say it to you another way. If you are a homeless individual, it's going to take a amount of time and process from, from the cradle to the grave for someone to get you into a sustainable recovery program to get you back to becoming a productive citizen. If you're on this end of the counter as a commissioner, city councilman, a school teacher, the police department, the fire department, the sheriff's office, a social worker, someone in the community who's often responding to these needs, and you really don't have a way, or you don't know how to get that person some help, that really causes you not to have a great night of sleep when you cannot get someone out of a community park, off a park bench, out of a car into a sustainable space. Rockdale County Commissioners, Dr. Williams, Commissioner Washington. Not this morning, but we have, I want to charge you all with the next thirty days to take a real deep dive at this presentation and this data. Because we have an opportunity to execute and no longer talk about how we're going to address. We don't have to do any more research. We don't need any more data. They started this, they came together in December. They began to work together starting in January of this year. It is now almost September. The work has been done. The proof is in the pudding. The data has been presented to us. We, as a community, we've got a decision to make. I'm going to yield. I'm going to start because I know Commissioner Williams was here a little long. Commissioner Washington came in on the tail end. But they both are, are just as well aware of this issue in our community, just like I am. Commissioner Williams, based upon what you've heard, what say you?
So I have lots of thoughts, and they're kind of random.
We did too.
First off, I suspect that that homeless count is low. I'm thinking back to a time when my husband and I and our five children were living with his parents in a three-bedroom, one-bath home. I doubt if those, my kids were counted as homeless in school, but it was definitely not permanent housing. So I can imagine that there are a lot of scenarios out there similar to that. And, and I would say that crosses educational lines. My husband and I both had bachelor's degrees. You know, it really was a matter of a recession and job stability, that kind of thing. It was temporary, but you know, I, I think there's plenty of children out there and probably adults that are not counted in that homeless.
Absolutely. Definitely in the homeless, the HUD count.
Yes, yes. I'm also thinking about a friend of ours who is a veteran, who lives in his car. He has some mental health issues. He does not want to be housed. He likes living how he lives because he says he has more freedom. So not everyone who is homeless wants to change their lifestyle. But that leaves a whole piece in the middle of, you know, I'm, I'm talking about two different extremes, but there's a whole piece in the middle of people who need assistance. You've mentioned interaction with criminal justice system, trespassing, public nuisance, those kinds of things. Those people need assistance. Hopefully, the transitional beds that will be opening in a year or so at our Restorative Justice Complex will assist in some of that. They'll be just a bed, that low, that low cost. I know that there are Housing First dollars available in the county now. But they really don't support someone long-term. They'll, they'll provide a need for a day or two or even a week or two. But they, but they don't provide all of the long-term and necessarily they don't, you know, they don't necessarily provide all the wraparound services that are needed. So I appreciate the work that went into this. I appreciate the data especially. I think that data tells us a lot. Outlining that budget makes it look really doable. It's like, okay, what can we start with? And, and how, you know, where does the funding come from? The revenue to, to fund these items, the hundred and twenty thousand for the first year? So thank you. So, thank you very much.
Commissioner Washington?
Well, first, I would like to thank you and all of the task force members for all of you all's hard work and dedication to this county and issue that we have. All three of us have had opportunities to assist people with, in a situation of homelessness, and all three of us have known that we need to tackle this issue. And I think all three of us have had different views on how it should be done and who should be doing it. So I think that this is a great start in the, in the whole process of dealing with the homelessness in Rockdale County. It's not going anywhere. As you stated, it's getting, it's getting worse as we prolong the issue. So I appreciate this document and all of the, all of the resources that are involved in, and the opportunities to start addressing some of these issues that are in this document. As the chairman stated, I just sat down, but as I'm perusing the document, there are numerous websites. So as I'm saying that, you know, get ready, a lot of people are gonna be asking for this document. There are numerous resources and kind of a plan on where we can get started, so I really appreciate that. And I hope that we can continue in this vein of putting something together so that we can start addressing some of the issues of our least. The, I don't want to say the least of us, but the people that need the resources that we offer in this county the most. And I'm also very encouraged that there are so many opportunities for the business community to participate, the faith-based community to participate in, and endeavor that will help those of us that are considered the most vulnerable at this time. So thank you for your leadership. Thank you, task members, even the ones that are not here, for all of the work that is going in here. And I think this is just the beginning, because now the work truly has to be started.
So much to be said. This is one of those initiatives that captures everybody's attention. And again, we've talked long enough about it, so I won't be redundant, commissioners, and repeat that over and over. I do think we have a sensitive amount of time left to make a decision. This board, it does, before we close out this calendar year. It just so happens that this presentation comes in the heart of our budget season. But we have community partners, and we have the City of Conyers, as well as the Rockdale County Public School System. And then there's a list of local businesses and faith-based entities who can participate if they choose to help. Again, what I don't want to see is for us, or for anyone, to spend the next year talking about this. It is time to do something. We've done this due diligence. We've done the work. While we're talking, going through this holiday season, there will be more and more homeless people out there. We have an opportunity to do something, starting on this end of, in 2024, and as the new board comes into fruition beginning in 2025, to continue to keep that light burning for those folks who are in need of this, this help. The last thing I will say that, I think one of the most important pieces to this is to know that this is not just a group huddle or conversation. It's gonna take an individual, a dedicated individual. And I want to spotlight, again, we say hats off to all of our task force members. The influence from the county part of us striking the match and leading this initiative is not about us getting credit. It's about us helping the people who need to help in the streets. But we have three individuals that work for Rockdale County who's been very instrumental in being a part of this task force, and I'm gonna call them out and ask that they will stand again, Ms. Jessica Polite, Ms. Katrina Carter, and Mr. Von Jameson. Y'all give them a round of applause. Commissioners, it's gonna take a team of individuals, very much like the talent that we already have. We don't have to go out and seek and search and find the talent. We have the talent in-house. They're already here. They're passionate about it. They've been a part of this robust, deep dive to be able to move us to this point. Let's not go out to Australia to try to find somebody in the land down under when they're right here standing in front of us. Thank you for the, for your work, and we look forward to you being able to put your hand to the plow in the days ahead. I just wanted to point them out. Give another round of applause. Oftentimes, we spend so much time searching for the right people, and they're right there in front of us. So I just wanted to make sure I pointed out that Rockdale has, we've got talent in Rockdale County. Absolutely. Mr. Farley, thank you. Thank you to the task force. I will come back in about thirty days. I will internally reach out to my colleagues, both Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams, giving them an opportunity to really do a deep dive on their own. The chances are, they'll be reaching out to you and some of the members of the task force to bring some more education and understanding about some of the information you provided, so they'll have a clear pathway forward in terms of what should we be doing as Rockdale County. In the interim, I'll also be knocking on the mayor's door. I'll also be knocking on the school superintendent's door. Because this takes a village in order to do this. They were a part of the collaboration, and certainly, we hope that we can hear from them in terms of what their participation would look like. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, in closing, I'd just like to say, hey, it's been a privilege. It's always great to come back to Rockdale County and participate in this way. One of the things that was always great to hear and deal with and interact with the task force was what they're doing now in the county, and what the county continues to do to address the needs of its residents. I would just like to charge all of the, all of the task force sponsors that we moved quickly and intentionally, it's not just Rockdale County, I'm talking about the mayor and also the school district, on establishing this. It is not unattainable to get this started at the price point of entry.
That's right.
I believe that price point of entry of a hundred and twenty thousand for year one will solidify the planning and the needs for the future in a way that is tangible and accesses funding that is currently not within the county. So you'll be spending a hundred and twenty thousand to get access to hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars, but you have to start somewhere. We were commissioned with getting a, to make a step forward, and we believe this is step one, is to staff it with a person, allocate the hundred and twenty thousand among the sponsors as they see fit, and execute the plan that we've shared with you. Thank you for the time. Thank you for the, the opportunity. And I appreciate, as always, call me if you need me. I'm prepared to talk about this in any way possible. The three from Rockdale County are readily accessible to you. They're excited about it. Call them. And if anything I can do for Rockdale County, let me know.
Let's give Ron a round of applause. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right, commissioners, we've got a lot to think about in terms of the homelessness task force, but for right now, we're gonna go to item number four, the approval of the agenda. What is your pleasure?
Okay, so are we deferring one, or just are we moving it from the agenda to now, or?
My recommendation would be deferral.
Okay. I move to approve the agenda as published.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned. And second, are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is item number five, the approval of the minutes from August thirteenth, 2024. What is your pleasure?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
I second the motion.
Properly motioned. And second, are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please. There's no unfinished business at this time. No consent agenda. We're moving right along to the regular agenda, agenda item number eight.
That's correct. And we'll go item by item and vote after each item. So item four oh nine is with Criminal Justice Coordinating Council through the Juvenile Court. It's fiscal year twenty-five Juvenile Justice Incentive Grant Award. The match, there is no match, and the amount is two hundred fifteen thousand, two hundred eighty-seven dollars. The term is July first, 2024, through June thirtieth, 2025, and it's submitted for ratification.
I move to ratify this contract as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned. And second, are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item four ten is with the Hospital Authority of Rockdale County through the Superior Court Accountability Court. For the Adult Accountability Court's grant application, the amount is thirty thousand dollars with no match. The term is December first, 2024, through November thirtieth, 2025.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned. And second, are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item four eleven is with Best Friends Animal Society through the Emergency Management Agency Animal Services Division. This is the completion of each roundtable training sessions. It's a grant in the amount of one thousand dollars per month with no match. It's ongoing as long as the sessions are offered.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned. And second, are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item four twelve is with Navcare through the Sheriff's Office for Inmate Health Services. It's change order number seven to contract twenty twenty dash ninety-eight. This is a price increase and renewal at three million, fifty-seven thousand, four hundred thirty-three dollars and forty-four cents per year. It was previously two million, nine hundred twenty-three thousand, three hundred one dollars and forty cents per year. The term is September fifteenth, 2024, through September fifteenth, 2025.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned. And second, are there any comments or questions?
So is the increase just due to an increase, or is it because of increased services?
Good morning, Chairman, Madam Commissioners, and I don't want to answer too much for the sheriff, so I'll get clarification. But what it appears is it's an increase of two hundred fifty-four thousand, seven eighty-six, twelve each month. So that's that total change order. It does not state whether it's for an increase in care, but I think it's just the way it's going as well as to cover if there are an increase in inmates. But I'll get that clarified and get back to you.
When you say the way is going, are you talking about inflation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
But I also know that they are increasing services in terms of their new, what they're calling their stabilization unit. And so I'm wondering if that is part of this increase.
I will find out and provide clarification to all three of you. Thank you.
Very good. It's been properly motioned. And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item four thirteen is with Gwinnett County Water Services, Water Resources, through the Water Resources Department. This is an intergovernmental agreement for protocol for obtaining the water service from either of the county's water distribution systems in the event of a short-term emergency. This is a commodity charge applicable at the time of usage. It's for five years with up to four additional five-year automatic renewal terms.
So, go ahead. I was gonna ask for explanation.
Well, I was too.
Or you're about to get it.
Absolutely. Okay, good morning. Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning.
Madam Chairmen, we're putting this agreement together in place with Gwinnett County because if we have some type of emergency, we just seen the recent emergency that the City of Atlanta had, where they was out of water. Well, you had a lot of water main breaks. So I wanted to make sure that we had an intergovernmental agreement in place with another municipality to be able to provide water if we have, ever have a emergency here in Rockdale County.
So this is both ways. So if something happens here, then we can, we have an intergovernmental agreement with Gwinnett. If something happens in Gwinnett, then we'll be obligated to provide them water.
That's correct. It works both ways.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I wanted to know. You know, I guess my hesitation is that we provide our own water here?
Yes.
And they do not? They get theirs from Lake Monir?
Yes.
And so...
Yes. And typically, Commissioner, municipalities' water departments, they have agreement with other municipalities because we do have, or there have been instances, you know, where an emergency arose and if you're out of water, your citizens are out of water. So I think it's in our best interest to have this agreement, you know, with another municipality in case we do have an emergency, you know, we do have access to water.
So it's just an emergency, right?
It's just, you know, emergency situation. We may, you may have a storm event that take, take us offline or anything, you know, and we can't provide water. We still want to be able to provide water to the citizens of Rockdale County.
This is Director Kimbry Peet, who's the Director of RWR, Rockdale Water Resources. I think one of the concerns that Commissioner Williams had is, does Gwinnett County have the capacity to assist us in providing water through this intergovernmental agreement? Do you know that?
That's a good question. Yes, they do. I've had conversations with Gwinnett County, and that's why I'm trying to put this in place. So we've had previous prior communications, I'm sorry.
Very good. Thank you. Any additional for the director?
No.
All right. Thank you, Director.
All right, you're welcome. Thank you.
So I move to approve the contract as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned. And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item four fourteen is with United Consulting Group through the Water Resources Department for Salem Lake Dam. It's category two dam for the visual inspection and construction materials testing services. The amount is twenty-three thousand, six hundred eighty dollars. It's for sixty days from the notice to proceed.
I move to approve the contract as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned. And second, are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item four fourteen, four fifteen is with Safe Built Georgia for the Planning and Development Department for Professional Services. It's change order number four to contract twenty eighteen dash one fourteen. It's a two percent price increase and to extend the term through July twenty-third, 2025.
I move to approve the contract as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned. And second, are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item four sixteen is with Georgia Power Company through the General Services Department for the Judicial Administrative Complex, the relocation of the overhead power lines along Court Street. The amount is fifty-one thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars and forty-six cents. The term is for one year.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned. And second, are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item four seventeen is with Atlanta Gaslight through the General Services Department for the Judicial Administrative Complex to rework the underground gas lines at Court Street, Pine Street, and Bake Street. The amount is one hundred sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred one dollar and ninety-one cents, and is for one year.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned. And second, are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item four eighteen is a requisition through General Services Department for Pratt Recycling for Bulk Waste and Trash Compactor Recycling for 2024. The current purchase order total is two hundred ninety-five thousand, eight hundred dollars, plus the change order in the amount of one hundred five thousand dollars. So the new purchase order amount is four hundred thousand, eight hundred dollars.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned. And second, are there any comments or questions?
Yes. Why is this going up thirty percent?
Director Hamlet, come on up and educate us, please.
Good morning, Chairman, Madam Commissioners. This is essentially due to the increase in collections and drop-off from citizens at the recycling center and 1200 Sigmund Road. So it is offset, in part anyway, by the revenue generated by that.
So was the, the previous amount not offset by revenue coming?
The previous amount was. We have additional collection. So we're, whereas we were last year tracking about twenty-five thousand dollars a month for the, the collections and the charge for Pratt to remove that from off-site, now we're about ten thousand dollars more per month in removal fees. So it's really just more, more people dropping things off at the recycling center.
Okay. Thank you.
It's...
You had a motion and a second. We need a vote.
It's been properly motioned. And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item four nineteen is a requisition through the General Services Department for Williams Fire Apparatus for emergency repairs to remove smart power generator and install the new Harrison generator. The amount is twenty-one thousand, eight hundred eighty-eight, eight hundred eighty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents. This is host-funded.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned. And second, are there any comments or questions? It's been properly motioned and second, are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item four twenty is a requisition through the General Services Department for Yancee Power Systems. This is a generator level one and two annual PM services. The amount is seventy-two thousand nine hundred ninety dollars and fifty-four cents.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and second, are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item four twenty-one is a requisition through the Sheriff's Office for GT Distributors for Bulletproof Fest. The amount is nineteen thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars and this is grant funded.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second, are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item four twenty-two is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for SERM for Sewer Rehabilitation Program for twenty twenty-four. The current purchase order amount is one million dollars plus the change order is three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, making the new purchase order total one million three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion, but I want to know again why it's gone up thirty percent.
Come on up, Director.
Okay, good morning, again.
Good morning.
The SERM contract went up, this particular contract went up because we used their services more earlier this year. We had a lot of rain, a lot of heavy rain events. During these heavy rain events, it was a possibility, it was the potential for sewer spills where the system was overloaded. So we actually had to use the services of SERM more this year from the original contract to be able to make sure that we had the adequate capacity to be able to handle these heavy rain events.
Okay.
So this is paying for work that's already been done?
Yes, ma'am, to be able to carry us out to FY twenty-five, February FY twenty-five.
So is it gonna go back?
To be able to continue to have these services to FY twenty-five.
Is it gonna go back down after the?
That's kind of depending on the weather, isn't it?
Well, yeah, absolutely. It depends on the weather. But right now what we are doing, we're trying to maintain within this particular contract with the money that's budgeted now for FY twenty-five. And we're making a determination on the budget for FY twenty-five on how we should move forward. But right now we're not expecting this contract to go up anymore.
Okay, thank you.
And I want to point out too, with the amount of inclement weather we've had over the last thirty-six months, if you know, if you remember or recall that Rockdale County has experienced a good number of spills.
That's right.
And each time we experience a spill, EPD and EPA fines us. We have to pay that amount. So to have this preventive proactive measurement in place, it saves us in the long run.
Absolutely, and I'm glad you brought that up Chairman because we hadn't had any sewer spills.
Right, so let's not talk about.
We've cut back. That's right, we've cut back.
Okay, alright.
It costs us a lot of money.
Absolutely.
We're feeling a little pinch right here Commissioners, but it's gonna be worth it in the long run because none of us control Mother Nature. Absolutely.
That's right.
Thank you Director.
Alright, thank you.
Motion and a second.
It's been properly motioned and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item four twenty-three is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for SERM for Sewer Preventative Maintenance Program for twenty twenty-four. The current, the current purchase order amount is five hundred thousand plus change order is three hundred seventy-four thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars, making the new purchase order total eight hundred seventy-four thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars.
So I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second, are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Some of the same. Next item, please.
Item four twenty-four is a requisition for the Water Resources Department for SERM. This is for Water Resources Asset Inventory Management for twenty twenty-four. The current purchase order is two hundred thousand dollars plus the change order is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, making the new purchase order total three hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and second, are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item four twenty-five is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for SERM. This is for Engineering Staff Augmentation Support for twenty twenty-four. The current purchase order is nine hundred ten thousand dollars plus the change order is four hundred and forty thousand dollars, making the new purchase order total one million three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second, are there any comments or questions?
So I'm guessing that all of these that have to do with SERM are.
Yes, ma'am, they're all related.
Are they weather-related, all of them?
Yes, ma'am, they're all related. Of course, when we use more services, we use more FTEs, full-time employees, more people, asset management, identifying manholes and everything for us out there in the field to be able to watch these lines and do the preventive maintenance on these sanitary sewer lines.
Okay.
So they're all related.
Okay, because some of these increases are more than fifty percent?
Yes, ma'am, and it's inclusive of all the services that we are using them for to be able to take us out to FY twenty-five to prevent these sewer spills in the future.
Okay.
Okay, thank you Director.
Alright, thank you.
We need a vote. We have a motion and a second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item four twenty-six is a requisition through the Transportation Department for Bagwell Fence Company for guard rail maintenance. The current purchase order is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus the change order is forty-five thousand dollars, making the new purchase order total one hundred ninety-five thousand dollars.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion, but I'd like to know why.
And what the, and what?
Come on up, Director. I think that's a valid question. She want to know why. We want to know why these change orders. Tell us about it.
Good morning Chairman, good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is simply focusing on the guardrails around the county. Some of those need to be maintained over time. Some of the bases may have eroded and we're gonna repair those. Simple.
Do we not have a preventative maintenance program on those? Are we just now going in?
Some of those, we're going in and we're getting assistance with those from Bagwell. They're helping us with that. Some of those are gonna be fully, fully redone and updated. There's some new technology for some of those guardrails, the ends, and that's what those, what those are capturing there with that change order.
So are we paying for those guardrails with the hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars? Or are they gonna ask us for more money to repair the guardrails?
No, so we've already been changing some of these out. This is a change order to continue.
Okay.
So the work is already ongoing?
It's ongoing, correct. We've already changed some out.
We've got a good number of guardrails all throughout the county. In fact, I ran across one on Highway twenty the other day that must have been damaged due to an accident years ago and just never had been replaced or repaired or changed out. Then there's one, you familiar with where Shady Grove Church is and the old Covenant Highway right there by the playground? There's one that just tore up from the flow-up and it needs to be repaired and replaced. It really can't be repaired. It's gotta be replaced.
Some of that technology is new technology to make it safer when they are hit. And as they're hit, we're changing those out.
Right. Okay, well, that's good information because oftentimes we see these as we move through the community and we don't know what's happening because if there's an accident last night, someone hit a guardrail, it takes quite a bit of time to replace it or repair it. And that is a safety feature on the roadway. The beginning impact of that guardrail is a device to help save the life. So that new technology is to increase that opportunity. So we have to do those. Yeah. Alright, thank you Director.
So you had a motion and a second. Need a vote?
That's what you're getting paid for.
It is, isn't it?
I appreciate you doing a good job over there. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. She's on it. Next item, please.
Item four twenty-seven is a list of surplus equipment from the Finance Department, General Services Department, the Tax Assessor's Office, Parks and Recreation Department, Fire Rescue, and the Sheriff's Office.
I move to declare these items as surplus as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second, are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item four twenty-eight is a special use permit case twenty twenty-three dash zero one. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended to authorize a special use permit for a two-hundred-foot AGO monopole communication tower and related telecommunication facilities at twenty-four hundred Southwest Tucker Mill, Conyers, Georgia, three zero zero one two. To repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is submitted for a second reading. And Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we have our attorney here this morning if you have any questions for him as well.
Yes, I do.
Okay, come on up, Mr. Maker. Thank you, Director.
So.
Good morning Chairman and Commissioners.
Good morning. So we've seen this before.
Yes.
And we denied it, and now it's back. So tell us why we need to vote for this.
Couple of reasons Commissioner. First of all, yes, it was denied. A lawsuit was filed under the Telecom Act in federal court. There are certain requirements under the ninety-six Telecom Act of what a governing body, whether it's a city or a county, has to do if they're going to deny a permit or deny a cell tower. The biggest issue is one of substantial evidence and a written record to support the denial. Candidly, the record was lacking from the last time this was before you, from a legal standpoint.
So what was it lacking?
It was lacking evidence as, true evidence as to valuation of property being diminished. There was some evidence of health issues or health-related issues. The Telecom Act prohibits a county or a city from considering that as a basis to deny a permit. And then lastly, there is a property rights dispute between the applicant and the property owner, and that is also not a basis. There are separate recourses that the property owners and the applicant, and in fact, my understanding is there's ongoing litigation over the lease agreement right now. And this is something I said last week at the public hearing. Those parties are in, they're in the legal system right now. If a court determines that the lease agreement that the applicant has brought forward as its basis for this tower is deemed invalid, then the tower won't go up. I mean, it's as simple as that. But a county is not really in the business nor a city of determining what various property rights might be. Our job as staff, and Mr. Wheeler contacted both County Attorney Beg and myself when this application came in because there was this dispute. We had David Strickland, who handles a lot of the county's real estate work, do a full title on it, determine that the lease had been recorded back in late December of two thousand twenty-two. And on that basis, there was, the application was allowed to move forward. But that is why, this is a matter to me that in federal court, I don't believe it would be a very good outcome for the county. And that's why it's back before you for reconsideration.
Not a very good outcome for the county would mean what?
Number one, federal court would tell you to approve it. Number two, there would be the imposition of attorney's fees for the applicant, not to mention what you're going to pay me to try to come up with as creative a defense as I possibly could.
Well, let's keep it real, huh? Let's keep it real, huh?
You want honesty, right?
So I have some genuine, well, what I think is a genuine concern. I had to change cars this morning. I left it. When I, we had a citizen who did a title search on her own. And some, in the actual, what we were presented was the option agreement that the, that has a file stamp on it. The lease that they are referring to doesn't, isn't file stamped and there's places on the lease where it's not signed. Also, I, you know, I can't get into what somebody considers a lease, but I don't see all of the consideration and things like that that make it look like it would be a valid lease. And especially when you compare it to other leases for a property. I, I, I'm still not comfortable as the county enforcing a contractual agreement between two people when one person, when one party is saying that they don't believe that they entered into the contract, especially in light of the fact that the other, the actual lease is not showing a valid stamp at the clerk of court's office. So I'm, if, I'm still going to vote against this if the other two Commissioners would like to, to vote for it. But based on the, I'm still not comfortable with this entire transaction. Now, if you all would like to defer it until we can get those questions asked, answered, maybe I would feel a little bit better about doing it. But I don't think, I don't like the fact that we have to be pitted against the community who doesn't want the towers in the first place. I don't understand why in the, in this technology-driven world where you have five G towers that are sitting on railroad tracks and all these other things, why we're still talking about these huge cell towers that are pitting the communities against each other. I don't think that, that us enforcing a contract that the homeowners are saying that they don't want this on their property either is in the county's best interest or in the citizen's best interest. So I, I'm still not in favor of approving this contract. I understand what, everything that you said, and we've had conversations about this. But I would like to have those questions answered before we move forward.
So my question, Mr. Maker, is do we have any gauge of the tracking of time with the verification of the property with the lease and all of that going on? Do we know, because that's going through the court system itself right now.
That's correct.
Do we have any gauge of when that will be completed? Because that would put the county in a better position in terms of making a decision. I heard all of the facts about cell phones and regulations and all of that, but I'm asking about this other piece.
I have no idea as to where, I know they've been doing depositions. I've heard that from counsel for the applicant. Where that matter stands in terms of discovery and a court docket, I have no idea. And can I respond real quickly?
Please.
To Commissioner Williams, I, excuse me, Washington, I'm sorry. I will tell you that Ted Meeker's book on real estate is about that thin and nobody's ever bought it. I will confess that upfront. That is why when something comes up, even in my own practice, I normally solicit the input of real estate attorneys. And that's why the county got Mr. Strickland involved to try to help us sort this all out. I will also tell you that ultimately, we all have opinions. Trust me, as lawyers, we all have differing opinions on a regular basis. There are times I'm a hundred percent certain that I'm gonna win and I lose and then there's a few times that I think we're going to lose and we win. Ultimately, whatever the arguments are as to the validity of the lease, a man or a woman that wears a robe will make that decision in a courtroom and then that will be possibly final or will go on to appeal. There's no way for me to verify the validity of that lease in any sort of a realistic timeframe. What we're presented with now unfortunately is a special use permit and a lawsuit that I'm trying to make a recommendation on for this body to avoid some of the consequences that can go along with it. And rest assured, and Commissioner, you made a comment to me last week and that's, it's a legitimate concern of if the county acts, is that somehow know they're going to influence what the judge does? And I, there's no way to predict that a hundred percent. I know I batted this issue around because I thought it was a great question with two friends of mine who were judges and I got a very quick no from both of them. But neither of them are the judge in this case, and I recognize that as well. But I, it's not the best position, I will concede, but it's nevertheless the one that the county finds itself in.
Well, we've been in these positions before. Executive Director Rutledge.
I have not been in a position where I've been asked to do something contrary to what the property owner wants. That's my issue, that we are, that they're asking us to approve a special use permit on a piece of property that the property owner is saying they don't want on their land. And that is why I am so adamant about not approving it. It's not because it's the, it's not because it's a cell tower because I've voted on cell tower uses before when the property owner wanted it, even though the community members did not necessarily want it. even though the community members did not necessarily want it. The property owner wanted it, and they had a valid contract. My issue is, right now, the property owner is saying they don't want this on their land. And I don't think that the county should be in the position to enforce a contract on somebody's land when the people who own it don't want it, and I have never been in that position before.
Well, we've been in the position of making tough decisions. That's what I was referring to. I was about to ask to the executive director, what, based upon our process, this is a second reading, what if we defer it?
You can defer it, but I don't know what that does to, um, the, since it's on a remand, are we on a timeline?
We're on somewhat of a timeline, but I believe it's been extended a couple of times.
Yes.
Okay, what has been extended? What are we on a remand?
The remand time period, we're supposed to report back to the court where we're at in this case in terms of the reconsideration by the board.
So that sounds like the court's watching to see what we're going to do before they make their decision.
There was an initial deadline, I believe it was sometime in June, and I believe that was extended to the end of sometime in September. I want to say mid-September, but I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me. But we're within the, we're running up on the second, and we've already extended it once, is my point.
So your next voting session will be September tenth? But, yeah, this is on a court timeline.
So the question becomes if, will anything change between now and September the tenth? So if we do defer it, the next session is September the tenth. This is already the second reading. The board can either make a decision today, or we can wait until September the tenth and make a decision.
So, so why would the court be waiting to see what we do?
Because we have withheld cranking up the true case. In other words, all the discovery, all the documents, everything that goes along with it. Because we identified this issue pretty early in the process. And so we have put a hold and asked the court for the party for the.
The issue of this lease agreement, is that what you're talking about?
No, no, we, again, we have not gotten into that lease agreement. Other than was it, in our minds, valid enough to go forward with the application? In terms of whether it's ultimately upheld as valid, we have not gotten into that issue at all. That's why there's a separate lawsuit. To your point Chairman, I don't know that there's going to be any facts. I mean, I don't know if there's anything pending for a judge to rule between now and your next meeting. My fear is that I won't have any new facts to present to the board between now or when we get to September tenth.
Well, the only thing that's in limbo, or one of the biggest things that's in limbo, if this lease and property is not solidified the proper way in terms of the agreement, if it goes through the court and it's fine, they determine that the cell tower company don't actually own this property, then this whole thing is null and void.
Right.
It doesn't, it won't even exist, it just automatically goes away. We don't have a way of tracking and to determine when that's going to make its way to the courthouse, and we certainly don't know what the courts, how the courts are going to rule. So, as the commissioner pointed out, we are in a sticky situation, but we still have a decision to make. And we either make that decision today, or we make it on September the tenth. Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
I move to deny the second reading.
I'm not going to second that.
You are.
I am not.
So the motion fails. Does anyone have another motion?
I move to defer this until September tenth.
I second that.
It's been properly motioned and seconded that we will defer this until September the tenth and make a decision on September the tenth. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item, please.
All right, Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding the CFO has more information on the Navcare contract right quick, so we'll fill that in before we go to the next item.
All right.
Good morning again. Thank you for allowing me to come back up. I do want to bring some clarification to the question for item twenty-two-four-four-twelve regarding the Navcare inmate health services. Major Welch has provided an answer on that. He has confirmed that it does not include the mental health stabilization that will be paid for with a grant. This is for the dental, which is adding a part-time employee as well as a four percent CPI increase.
Okay, so it's part inflation, but it's part increased services?
Due to the number of folks and to provide those medical services necessary.
Thank you.
And they'll be here at one o'clock also if you have any further questions.
Thank you CFO, and thank you to Major Welch for that as well. All right.
Okay, item four-twenty-nine, our amendments to the Rockdale County Employee Classification and Pay Plan through the Talent Management Department. It is recommended that you defer this item this morning?
I move to defer item four-twenty-nine.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item, please.
Item four-thirty is an ordinance amending Chapter Two, Article Four of the Code of Rockdale County, Georgia, providing for the abolishing of certain departments for consolidation of certain departments, for the creation of certain departments, amending certain sections of certain chapters of the Code of Rockdale County, Georgia, and for other purposes. It was submitted for a first reading, but it's recommended that you defer this item this morning.
I move that we defer this item.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item, please.
Item four-thirty-one is a volunteer appointment for the Conyers Rockdale Library Board for Ms. Lakosha Williams. This is an appointment. Her term would be August twenty-twenty-four through December twenty-twenty-six.
I move to approve this appointment as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item, please.
Item four-thirty-two is an ordinance amending Division Three of Article Six of Chapter Two of the Code of Rockdale County, Georgia, providing authorization for an equal opportunity program for Rockdale County. This is submitted for a first reading. However, if it's unanimous, you may waive the second reading.
I move to approve the first reading, waive the second reading, and adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And item four-thirty-three is the Equal Business Opportunity Policy, policy number twenty-two-three-dash-one-dash-twenty-seven as amended.
I move to approve this policy as amended.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
Gosh, I'm so, I'm, I do, um, you know, I, I thank you all. And having an EBO policy in this county is something that we worked very, very hard on for a very, very long time. But it, it kind of shows, you know, it definitely shows the values that this board has and how we would like to proceed in not just a business internally, but externally to the world. So I think this is a great policy, and hopefully it will continue, and, and everybody will reap the benefits of this policy.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item, please.
All right, item four-thirty-four is with Springfield Christian Ministries through the Board of Commissioners Office, and this is the final consent order and judgment for the right-of-way agreement and a condemnation proceeding of three-point-seven-oh-one acres for the Courtesy Parkway Extension. And it is my understanding this morning that Commissioner Washington would like to abstain.
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner.
So could you give us a little background on that, please?
Um, well, we have Mr. Meeker here this morning too.
Okay.
Yes, the county filed a condemnation petition for the Courtesy Parkway Extension project. Springfield Christian Ministries was one of the parcels that we condemned. We did some updating in terms of our appraisal information and our cost to cure for the buildings that were taken down as a part of that. We had a mediation a couple of weeks ago, and the parties reached a tentative agreement subject to approval of the Board of Commissioners.
Okay.
And that's what this reflects. This will resolve the case that is pending against the church.
Okay, thank you. So I move to approve the contract as presented.
I second that motion. It's been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item, please.
Could we get Commissioner Washington on the record abstaining?
Abstaining.
She's abstaining.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
You have to be verbal.
Let the record reflect that Commissioner Washington is abstaining, and Commissioner Williams.
Abstaining with a smile.
Have moved forward. All right, next item, please.
Item four-thirty-five is rezoning case twenty-two-four-dash-fifteen. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia, as amended by rezoning twenty-four-twenty Sigmund Road from C-two general commercial to MRU mixed residential uses. To impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item, please.
Item four-thirty-six is rezoning case twenty-two-four-dash-sixteen. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia, as amended by rezoning nineteen-twenty Southwest Highway two-twelve, nineteen-hundred Southwest two-twelve, Highway two-twelve, Southwest Oglesby Bridge Road, and a portion of nineteen-twenty-nine Oglesby Bridge Road from AR Agricultural Residential to CRS Collaborative Residential Subdivision to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item, please.
Item four-thirty-seven is rezoning case twenty-two-four-dash-twenty-four. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia, as amended by rezoning ten acres at nineteen-twenty-nine Oglesbury Bridge Road from AR Agricultural Residential to C-one local commercial. To impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item, please.
Item four-thirty-eight is rezoning case twenty-two-four-dash-seventeen. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia, as amended by rezoning three-twenty, four-sixty, and four-seventy Honey Creek Road, southeast from AR Agricultural Residential to CRS Collaborative Resident, Collaborative Residential Subdivision to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item, please.
Item four-thirty-nine is rezoning case twenty-two-four-dash-twenty-one. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia, by, as amended, by rezoning sixteen-eighty, seventeen-hundred, seventeen-twenty Walker Road from AR Agricultural Residential to CRS Collaborative Residential Subdivision to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and refer the ordinance to the Planning Commission.
I second that motion.
It's properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item, please.
Item four-forty is a special use permit case twenty-two-four-dash-zero-five. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia, as amended to authorize a special use permit for a private pre-K-five school at twenty-four-twelve Southeast Ebenezer Road to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? I, I, I have a comment. I will, I'm familiar with this one, and let me just say, we've got a group of young people, students and parents, who have basically been held hostage in our community as they're trying to transition to a, a new place to operate their school year. Their school year has been placed on the back burner, put on hold. As all of us know, school has already started. So this is very important that it moves forward so these young people can get the education that they need, and the parents can get these kids into school, and they can get up and running. I think hats off to the folks over at, um,
Hodge.
At, yes, for moving forward with this, this, and the collaboration in the community. I want to say thank you to our Planning and Development Department also for putting this high up on the radar because the clock is ticking. I wanted to point that out.
All right.
So where have they, where have they been meeting?
They were previously at another church here in the community, but things have changed that location, and they've had to, in the blink of an eye, so to speak, find something, and it all kind of unfolded right as school was about, was ready to open up. So they were kind of between a rock and a hard place. So God has answered prayers, and we're in the middle of helping facilitate the answering of those prayers, so it's going forward. Absolutely.
Can we waive the second reading for this?
Well.
No, we have to skip to the public hearing process.
To the Planning Commission.
I just want to.
Can't skip the public hearing process.
Thank you.
Right.
But you do have a motion and a second, so you do want to vote on it to put it in the process.
Right, and we like your heart too, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Well, I, I had the same question.
Thank you.
So you have a motion and a second.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So it's going to the Planning Commission. Next item, please.
Item four-forty-one is to the Talent Management Department, and it's a list of Rockdale County employee policies. The rehabilitation policy, the severance policy, travel per diem and mileage policy, civility and anti-bullying policy, bilingual incentive program policy, fire, fire rescue incentive pay policy, disciplinary procedures policy, tuition reimbursement policy, drug and alcohol use policy, sick leave policy, and the non-discrimination and anti-harassment policy.
I move to approve these policies as presented and amended.
I wanted to vote against the severance policy. So how do we?
All right, well, do you want to take all of them together with the exception of the severance policy when you make your motion?
Sure.
Or do you want to vote on every one of these policies individually?
We can accept the severance policy.
So Commissioner Williams made a motion to approve the policies. You could say with the exception of B, the severance policy?
If you should, if you, do you?
Well, I, I don't know what your reasons for wanting to hold off on that are.
Well, I was gonna, so, um, in my opinion, the severance policy doesn't give the administration the opportunity to look at each case individually. And I would prefer that, as I've stated to them, that there was not a uniform policy in place, but that we had the, that, I would prefer that the board continues as it is so that it can look at each case individually and make that recommenda, make recommendations based on the egregiousness of the situation and other things, not just the longevity of the person who was employed here. So that was my reasoning. I think it takes away some of the autonomy from the board, and it doesn't give enough consideration for the conduct of the person that is being asked or, asked to resign or resigning.
Okay, um.
And Executive Director Holmes is going to share some insight, but Commissioner, I still want to hear from you as well.
Well, I understand what Commissioner Washington is saying. I always am interested in the individual circumstances. I'm wondering if it, there can be a general policy as it's written with subject to?
And Madam Commissioner, thank you. Good afternoon, yes, good afternoon Chairman, Madam Commissioners. This current policy does exclude anyone that's being removed for cause. It also excludes anyone that resigns on their own accord. So it does have to be something that the board does agree with in terms of the application of the policy. It also does allow for consistency in terms of how it's applied. So, and it does speak to tenure, but again, it's very specific in terms of if someone ends their appointment for cause, it is not applicable. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, so Chairman, what is, what are your thoughts on it?
Well, as a board, we've operated in multiple different lights. And where I sit, my concern is always the precedence that we set as a board with, whether it's impacting the person who's leaving, resigning, or whatever, or whether we're setting a precedence for the folks who are still here watching. or whether we're setting a precedent for the folks who are still here watching whatever decision we make. Because for those employees who are still here, if we don't, in their opinion, apply what they believe is fair play, then we as a board is going to have to deal with that also. Because they're going to contact their attorney and say, well, I remember three months ago when John Doe left, they did A, B, C, one, two, three. And now I'm in a very similar like situation and I'm being left high and dry. So that is a concern. Um, so we, we haven't had a, a consistent practice. And, uh, you know, I'm old school, so I believe that if anybody walk off a job from anywhere, they just abandon their post and walk off a job, they don't get paid. That's, I never heard of anybody who just dropped the keys and walked out the office and just quit. And then they ended up with a severance.
Okay, so I have a question.
Yes.
Um, if someone is asked to resign, they're given the choice of either resigning or, you know.
This would be applicable in that case.
It would be.
It would be applicable in that case. So in that particular case, we are asking them and we're going to end the appointment. So we do give them the option to resign.
And they would still be, of, still have the option of receiving a severance?
When I'm, when I'm speaking of cause, that means they've done something that's illegal, that's against policy. There's been some violation. So that would be, if it's for cause, it would not be applicable. But if someone's term is ending or an appointment is ending, and I also wanted to clarify that this policy is only applicable to appointed officials by the B O C. So we're not offering severances, not for every, um, employee in the county, but there are those situations where an employee, where an individual is appointed and then if their appointment ends and they're being asked to end the appointment, that would be applicable under this policy.
Okay.
So, um, all right, hang tight. Executive Director Relich.
Yes.
I'd like to recommend that we take item number B in this list of policies out for today and allow this board a little bit more time to, um, interface with Executive Director Holmes and her team and perhaps even the county attorney, um, before we make a decision. I, I'm comfortable moving forward with all other items except, except item B.
So if that's the wish of the board, then my recommendation would be for Commissioner Williams to restate her motion to approve all of the policies with the exception of B. And then, um, I need clarification from you if you want to defer it or if you want to pull it off the agenda. What, what's the desire?
So, um, I would change my motion to say I move to approve the policies except for item B, which I would move to defer.
So you want to defer?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, then that would be your restated motion. And then it would show up on your next agenda.
Yes.
I second.
Okay.
Okay.
Duly noted.
All right, does she need to repeat that or that's good?
Well, I would, yes, please.
Repeat it for the rest.
I move to approve the policies except for item B, which I move to defer.
And we have a second?
And second.
And now we need a vote.
It's been properly motioned and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you and motion carries. Next item please.
Item four forty-two is an ordinance to amend chapter one, part three of the Rockdale County Code of Ordinances as amended so as to amend provisions regarding county travel expense and for other purposes, this is submitted for a first reading. However, if it's unanimous, you may waive the second reading.
I move to approve the first reading, waive the second reading, and to adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and second, any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, we're almost there. Item four forty-three is a requisition for the General Services Department for prime contractors. This is for the emergency roof replacement at the, at the Water Resources Building. The amount is fifty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second, are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right.
So we're down to public comment. I don't have any cards, but did someone phone one in?
Public comment, public comment. Board comment, going right into board comment with Commissioner Washington, Commissioner?
Yes, so first we have our latest edition of Rockin' Rockdale Pets. We can queue that up.
Oh, there it is.
There it is.
Here in Rockdale County, we love our furry friends, but there are so many of them that need a home. So I'm showcasing Rockdale County Animal Services to raise awareness on all the wonderful pets to rescue. Hi, I'm Commissioner Sherri Washington and this is Adopt a Rockin' Pet. Who are we here to see today?
We're going to be meeting Faith today.
Faith is about two and a half years old. She's a bulldog boxer mix. We found her on the corner of twenty and Sigman Row. She is considered a highway dog, but she is ready to be adopted. So come and get Faith. So tell me how you can come and adopt a pet from Rockdale County Animal Control.
So you'll come up and we have a one-page application. It's only a sixty-dollar fee that does come with a microchip as well as a rabies tank. We've already dewormed the portatella and D H P P the dogs as they come in, but you'll just fill out that application, pay the sixty-dollar fee, we'll send it to be spayed and neutered, and your baby's ready to go home.
Okay, well, come on and get Faith.
Thank you for watching Rock.
So as you can tell, Faith is a lot of fun. She loved to be dressed up in her little tutu and she had a bowtie on. Um, and they, they, they told me that these are, are fairly, um, effective as every time we put a, a dog up, they get adopted. All of the puppies, Eeny, Meeny, Miny, Mo, and Tiger were adopted by the time we got back. So um, this is working out really good, but, um, Faith is a great dog. If you all need a, a dog, she was very playful. Had a whole lot of energy, too much for me. I think I need an old dog. Somebody that's, a dog that's calm. Knows likes to go to bed, but it was a whole lot of fun. Um, the second thing that was a whole lot of fun this weekend was our, um, county employee picnic. I know I'm taking some of Talent Management's thunder for later, but Calvin Cody from Rockdale Water Resources is the employee of the year. It was such a great time to give him the, um, all of the accolades. And I don't think I've seen a prouder mother. His mother was there in the audience and she was taking pictures with him. Like it was, I think his employee of the month picture is going to be with his mama and on the, on the, um, in the vestibules, but he was proud of himself. His mother was definitely proud of him.
Well, she's proud of her baby.
Absolutely.
Y'all give Cody a round of applause. Absolutely.
Can I say that I really love the process because, um, the employees, all of the employees of the month from the department chose the top three. And then, um, you all made the final decision.
Come on up, uh, Executive Director Holmes and tell us about that process. Cause we've got some talented people and it's tough to choose the top person.
It, yes, Chairman, it was actually very, very exciting. So what we did this year is there were a total of eleven nominees. We had a great representation throughout the county.
Let's give all eleven nominees a round of applause. Absolutely. Oh, shucks, just to get nominated.
Since Siobhan is here, I'm gonna have her go ahead and wave her hand because she was one of our nominees.
All right, yes.
This afternoon.
Another rock star.
Yeah, out of our, um, tax assessor's office. So Chairman, we actually brought the eleven nominees. Each of the departments were able to select who they wanted to nominate. The eleven nominees came together. They had a breakfast. They talked about why they should be the employee of the year. They talked about why it was important to them, their achievements, their accomplishments in terms of what they had done and how they service the citizens of Rockdale County. From that eleven, the eleven voted for the top three. So they actually voted for the top three. And then from that group of individuals, they also voted for who the employee of the year was. So we were excited to have them. They were nominated as all of the rock stars for the county and that eleven, and those eleven individuals selected Mr. Calvin Cody as our employee of the year for two thousand and twenty-four.
Wow, he was selected by?
His peers.
His peers, absolutely.
So like I told.
His competitors, Mr. Chairman, if you want.
Yes, yes.
They were voting for them and they were voting for him.
His mother, like I said, was very proud, but she talked about her son and how he brings breakfast to the crew and maybe some lunch or something and how they can always depend on how he loves his jobs. He's with, um, Water Resources, but they, he, she talked about how he loves to go to work every day. So that's a testament to leadership also. So, um, I was, that was a whole lot of fun to, um, to give that this weekend. And that's all I have for right now.
All right, Commissioner Williams.
Finishing my notes here. Okay, um, the other thing that happened on Saturday is that Representative Dorian Carter and I can't remember his name, the other representative, state representative, um, put together a listening session for the community and it was for, it was actually held in Rockdale County, but it was for DeKalb, Gwinnett, and Rockdale County citizens. I think the highlight of that, uh, meeting for me was that, um, I had a chance to share a few things with them about the strategic plan, reimagine Rockdale. And the fact that the fourth priority of the citizens, which didn't fall that far behind the first priority, the fourth priority was arts and culture. They wanted more arts and culture. And when Commissioner Washington told them about the arts and culture entertainment district on the property that we purchased on, on I twenty and, uh, Sigman Road, they erupted into applause. And, um, which reflected the priority that had showed up in the, um, in the, in the, the strategic plan process with the community. So, um, I was, I was very excited about that. That, um, that's, that's something that we, we are looking forward to moving forward with, that it's something that citizens are looking towards and, um, figuring out how we're going to do that. We have lots of work to do on it. Um, but working on that. Okay, there's, um, the not, my nonprofit appreciation brunch last week, um, or two weeks ago was really, really nice. We had a very large turnout. Um, our speaker was really good. The theme was joy in the journey of service. And, um, Pastor Landry, Sheldon Landry, talked about a lot of ways and reasons why service can be a joy in that journey. I think we have a video.
So welcome this morning to our six-day nonprofit appreciation brunch. I so appreciate all the work that is being done in our communities, like you and others who are not here this morning.
We have two nonprofits that are being recognized this year. And our first one is, um, the Refuge Center, which is located in, uh, St. Louis, Florida. On National Nonprofit Day, the Refuge Center is honored by the Oregon Women's White House to for dedication to assisting those in need to support guidance and education. Joy in the journey of service. Our next, um, honorary this year, our highlight is the G N O movement. On National Nonprofit Day, the G N O movement is honored by the Oregon Women's White House to for the passionless plight of certain communities. Joy in the journey of service.
I want to take a moment and, um, thank Deidra Goldston for the work that she did in putting that together. It was a hundred percent perfection.
Let's give Deidra a round of applause.
So this is Deidra's last week with us at the county. Um, I am super sad about that. But she has a great opportunity to move on and work for the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia. And, um, so we, we will miss her, but we look forward to the work that she'll be able to do at a state level.
And we'll see some more.
And we will see her at all the A C C G conferences. Um, next is, uh, the International Overdose Awareness Day. And that will be held, uh, September fif- fifth, and I believe there's a flyer that should be coming up. That will be September fifth at Springfield Baptist Church from six to eight. That is something that we have been doing annually for a number of years and it's, there it is. It's a recognition for those in recovery, but it's also a recognition for those who unfortunately did not recover. Who, um, last year it was so moving because we had family members of people who had passed away from an overdose, who shared the stories of their child or their sibling. It's, it's a, it's an event that makes you remember that there's a lot of heartache and there's a lot of work to be done. But there's a lot of hope also. And I like the theme there, Together We Can. That is a national, uh, initiative that happens every year. The last thing I wanted to talk about was, um, the bus tour that is coming through Rockdale County from, um, it, this is to, this is specifically to recognize Recovery Month. It's coming out of the office of, uh, D B H D D. Commissioner Tanner will be coming, uh, on this bus tour of the state. They will be stopping at Grit and Grace on September thirteenth. And, um, he will speak and I will speak and some of the others, there will be some other speakers. But again, this is, um, a free public event that really represents the work that we have done in Rockdale County with our stepping up initiative, with our collaboration with Grit and Grace, with our, uh, uh, restorative justice complex that's in the process of, of being renovated. It kind of brings things together to re- it, it's, I think it's, it's nice to be recognized at the state level. It's also nice because sometimes that makes us more, um, known and funding comes a little more easily because of that. So those are my comments.
All right. Well, thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Um, want to, I think I want to, let me call up Director Simkins. We've got some updates on what we've done, what we've done and completed out at the Lakeview Estates. I think it's important that we share, uh, Director, the work that we've done out in that area.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, uh, it's been a great year, um, in summation for stormwater management. We've got a many stormwater infrastructure jobs completed and addressing this forty years in neglect. But one of the major jobs that we are proud of that we were able to get completed this year was our stormwater infrastructure upgrade and rehab of the both rear roadways into the Lakeview Sunrise Estates community. Uh, Lake Rockaway. rear roadways into the Lakeview Sunrise Estates community. Lake Rockaway Road and Frontier Drive are the names of the two rear access roads that go back into that neighborhood. It's gonna be a win for public safety, fire and rescue, you know, the citizens having access and safety is paramount. So we're just glad to get both of those roadways open. So now all entrances and egresses to that neighborhood are open.
Very good, very good. That's a big deal, ladies and gentlemen, that, because this community has been locked down with multiple, without multiple access for a number of years. And now, particularly as the director pointed out, for public safety purposes, but just for everyday operations and moving through for the residents in the Lakeview Sunrise Estates area, this is a big deal. Hats off to stormwater management, transportation, and all of our other partners. Let's give them a round of applause for making this happen. And I'm sure all of our public safety personnel, again, are really relieved knowing that we have multiple points of access in the event of an emergency to get to those residents to be able to service them. I also want to take a moment, Deputy Director from Parks and Rec, Ms. Wilson, come up and give us, we had a big turnout, huge turnout on Sunday for the summer concert. You have one summer concert left for this calendar year, but you may even have a couple other things you want to tell us about while you're at the podium. Deputy Director Wilson, Parks and Recreation.
Good morning, Chairman, Madam Commissioners. And I also would like to bring up Ms. Bing, just to stand beside me, but I'll use my verbal. But she's at a Costly Mill. But yeah, we had a great turnout, over three thousand people at our concert this past Sunday. We had grits and jelly butter out. We actually had to put up our closed parking signs, because we ran out of space. So it was a great turnout. Next month, we actually have the Corey Brown Band, September twenty-ninth at Costly Mill. It'll be our last series out of the four that we do during the summer, five to seven o'clock, two addresses on there because it's two entries. So we have twenty-five ninety-nine Salem Church Road and also twenty-four fifty-five Costly Mill Road, and it's five dollars per parking fee. So if you wanna go ahead and crowd in the car and pay one five-dollar fee, don't hesitate to do so. But yeah, it's been a great summer, great turnout, great community support for our concert series.
Well, very good.
In addition to that, our second session of Hoops After Dark has started.
Okay.
So that's a collaborative, grant-funded program through CJCC.
Now, tell us about the benefits of Hoops After Dark.
So Hoops After Dark targets fourteen to seventeen-year-old youth here in the county. Those youth that are maybe referrals from our juvenile courts or just in a quandary at home that need an outlet. So with that, they come in, they do conflict resolution classes, which are mandatory. They also do cooking sessions with our, let's name of the group across the way. Yes, thank you, ma'am. Yes, yes, Extension Services, thank you, UGA. In addition to that, they have a, we have a basketball portion, and we also do esports as well as cheer and dance. So the kids are doing a really good job of coming out. We have a big parental support, so they do have parent classes as well. We have mentoring opportunities and guest speakers who come out, and the kids also get fed. So they play every Thursday evening, starting last Thursday was the first game, and they'll go all the way to September twenty-sixth.
So let me ask you, Deputy Director Wilson, has the window of opportunity closed? If a parent wanna get their young person involved in that program, was there a registration? How does it work?
Yeah, so there is a registration process. We're still open for the esports component as well as the cheer and dance, but not the basketball. We are at capacity. But if they go into our Rockdale County website, the Parks and Rec page, they can actually register through our program by clicking the Milia Rec system, which is our new software.
Very good, very good. So Commissioner Williams mentioned a moment ago during her comments, what we've done collectively as a board to really spotlight arts, culture, and entertainment in Rockdale County. You started off talking about the summer concert and the one that's upcoming. Ms. Bing, you've done a lot of different things out at Costly Mill. Why don't you talk to us about the importance of arts, culture, and entertainment? Make your way to the mic. What I call in, that's why I want you to.
Good morning, Chairman, good morning, Madam Commissioners. No, I was just stating in my head, we have done a lot. One of our biggest highlights that we just did back in July, the Arts for Ages, that was a grant-funded event. And we were very excited to collaborate with our senior service division, and we are definitely wanting to bring that event back next year, just to highlight the arts and cultures. We're constantly looking for new events to bring to the county. We observe what Gwinnett County is doing and here in County. So we are planning now for next year events. We are in the process of planning. We don't want to speak on too many things that we have in store, but we are trying to highlight new events to bring to our Arts and Culture Division. And just to say too, as we stated, we just wrapped, we're wrapping up our summer concert series. Deputy Director Wilson and I have just applied for a couple of awards for NRPA and GRPA, so we're looking, we highlighted the summer concert series. Last year, we won for Hoops After Dark. We also applied for the Arts of Ages for our new event for this year. So we're excited with GRPA and NRPA coming up. We are excited about coming to the actual conferences and bringing home those awards for our county.
When I text you Sunday night and asked you how many people was at the concert, you just replied with one word. You said, "A heap." But I want you to give a real quantification. How many folks do you think were out there on Sunday? Because there was a lot, it was a heap, but can you give us a rough, a real number?
Well, roughly, I would say about three thousand. With the assistance of the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office and Rockdale County Fire Department, we had, we had the bike medics out. I want to give a shout out to the Sheriff's Office, the deputies and the bike medics. Claire was out there, and they were on it. We didn't have any accidents. We didn't have any emergencies, everything. They were right there, streamlined for three thousand people to be in the park, no complications. Everyone was just dancing and having a great time, and that's what we love. And even though the weather was kinda hot, but it was nice and breezy, our vendors were out. We had an amazing time.
Well, that is good. And I tell you, arts, culture, and entertainment has really grown here in Rockdale County. People appreciate being able to stay in their own backyard, so to speak, without having to go to those other cities and counties, and particularly driving westbound into Atlanta, being able to have the venues that we have here in Rockdale County. People can take the lawn chairs. It's a family. Let me just share, Commissioners, one of our folks who was blending in with the crowd on Sunday was Chairwoman Nicole Hendrickson from Gwinnett County.
Really?
She is. She texted me, she said, "Chairman, I just want to let you know out of respect, I'll be easing into your county to Rockdale County, the Costly Mill Park." I said, "Well, you coming into the right county, and you're gonna have a good time." She came in, she texted me during the event and said, "Chairman Nesbit, this is one of Rockdale's best-kept secrets." I said, "It ain't a secret. Look at all the people." So we're making major strides when folks from outside, there's a lot of folks outside of the county, come into Rockdale to participate or just enjoy a beautiful, you guys have done a fantastic job. Hats off to Director Redmond and both of you and your staff, because as you've heard me say repeatedly, no one gets anything done by themselves. And the amount of work, you made mention of the Sheriff's Office presence, you made mention of the Fire Department, particularly those bike medics. I like the preventive and the proactive measures, the sun, the heat, but we already have our first responders already on site in the event that something happens. Now, what about as we go through this fall season? You got, you have anything coming up we need to know about?
I'll share that with you. And Chairman, while you were shouting out other counties, I want to shout out Peachtree City came out. There were, we actually had surveys to give out. So they took surveys and we got.
Wait a minute. Did you say Peachtree City?
We had some, we had a whole family.
That's, now, Gwinnett County is just a hop, skip, and a jump from Costly Mill, but Peachtree City is a hump.
We had some folks from Cobb County, Peachtree City. We had some people down from Madison and on down twenty. We had people from all over Henry County. So it's nice to see not just people coming in Rockdale, but everyone from all over coming out.
We've talked about it multiple times, arts, culture, and entertainment impacts economic development.
Absolutely.
I mean, you know, all those folks coming in, people spending money, and they're going to restaurants and buy, if they're not doing anything, we're buying gasoline for the vehicle. That impacts economic development, absolutely. So Corey Brown, Rockdale County's own native son, in terms of our employment workforce, will be wrapping up the concert. And give us that date again.
That date is September twenty-ninth, and from five to seven p.m. And just to point out, as Deputy Director Wilson said, we are, our new parking is working very efficiently. We are having people enter from the Costly Mill Road and Salem Road, so the traffic won't get backed up.
Very good. Ladies, y'all keep up the good work. Give them a round of applause.
Thank you.
Great job, great job, great job, great job. All right, my last little comment here, I want, and Executive Director Memms, I want you all to just go overboard with this announcement as we move through the next few years. We already, we've already highlighted what's happening with our three major transportation projects that are all gonna unfold at the same time here in Rockdale County. And you've heard me say, no pain, no gain. So in order for us to get to the point of progress, there's gonna be a little painful and uncomfortable. You see signs all over the place that say, pardon our progress. Play the video. I want to talk about the three major transportation projects we have going here in Rockdale County.
Did you know progress is rolling towards Rockdale with three major Georgia Department of Transportation roadway construction projects set to begin this year? That's right. You heard correctly. Three major roadway projects are set to begin this year. The projects are State Route one sixty-two, Salem Road Wideening Project, the Courtesy Parkway Bridge, and Interstate twenty at State Route one thirty-eight, State Route twenty interchange, reconstruction, and widening project. These projects are all scheduled to begin as early as October and can span over the next three to four years. What does this mean for you? If you travel these routes, begin to start seeking alternative routes and adjusting your travel schedules. While all of this may be coming at once, this will improve capacity, traffic flow, and accessibility once the projects are complete. We will continue to give updates as more information develops. Please pardon our progress. Thank you for watching.
So I'm asking that Public Relations Commissioners, share that video with every group, every entity, every church who want to include it in their Sunday morning church announcements. We want the world and Rockdale County to know that progress, number one, is being made, but there is gonna be some inconveniences over the three years. In order for us to get to a place of progress, there's gonna be a little bit of uncomfort, discomfort. Planning, as the young lady stated, plan your route, plan ahead. You can't be all those last-minute procrastinating folks. You can't be waiting till the last minute because you're gonna be fussing and cussing as you're sitting in traffic, and we don't want you to do that. Now, particularly Highway, State Route Highway one thirty-eight, all of us have experienced the congestion and the nightmare that it brings just as it's set. Imagine, once the construction starts, it's gonna be even more of a nightmare. So we're asking, if you want this to play Sunday morning at your church, call Public Relations, say, send that email, send the video to me. If you want it at your nonprofit group or whomever, your HOA, ask for the video. We want to get it out to as many people and places to start alerting people and making them aware of the progress in Rockdale County. I'm gonna wrap up. I know we've got another meeting to get to. We need to take a break here in between. So Executive Director Rutledge, is there any need for executive session from this meeting?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Ladies and gentlemen, happy Tuesday. This meeting is adjourned. We'll be back at one o'clock to start our budget hearing.